All right, so with that, couple minutes left, just a minute.
Yeah.
I will call this meeting to order.
Cody Pribelski.
Present.
Dave Schreit.
Present.
Darren Olson.
Present.
Mark Lochner.
Present.
And I, Pat Roschewski.
I'm present.
Those that are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, virtue card reading for tonight will be read by Pat.
Uh, reliability. Reliability means that others can depend on you. You keep your commitments and give your best to every job. You are responsible, you don't forget, and you don't need to be reminded. Other people can relax knowing things are in your reliable hands. You are practicing reliability when you make promises you can keep, really care about doing what you promise, return things you borrow, plan ahead, do your best and finish on time. Find another way if obstacles occur. Affirmation, I am reliable, I keep my promises, others can depend on me. Nothing can stop me from giving my best.
Thank you, Pat. Board of Education Guidelines. With an open mind, we will establish an atmosphere that allows expression of all views, even when views are not in line with all members being respectful of time. We work collaboratively with the district administrator by having open and honest conversations around district priorities. We work collaboratively with all stakeholders to monitor key indicators so that equitable teaching and learning results in high achievement. We will work towards building a trusting environment where both students and staff can reach their full potential and celebrate successes in academics, the arts, and athletics. Uh, public comments? I am, I don't see anybody.
We actually do have a report from CWSA.
Okay.
Would you like to read it or?
Sure. So I'm gonna skip the public comment section unless there's someone on, we're not virtual, are we?
No, there is the only one.
Okay, so I'm gonna skip that section for tonight. Um, and before I read the CW.
Oh.
You're doing okay, okay, just joking.
I looked her way, I didn't see any eye contact, so.
Cheer her head down.
Um, before I read the update, we have Ryder Abbey with us tonight, and then Alexa is at boardroom, our student representative. So Alexa is the president, um, and then Ryder is the vice president. Um, and as most of you guys know, we like to have updates from the high school and what's going around the district, so it would be a great asset to the upcoming school year and the year to come. So thank you guys for being here. Uh, CWSA updates. Uh, we have a monthly report here from Nita Curse. The Central Wisconsin STEM Academy held an end of the school year family picnic on the evening of Monday, May thirty first. Students and their families, prospective students and their families, Dr. Black and the Governance Council attended. We served food and beverages, played dodgeball, painted rocks, and held a question and answer session for parents. CWSA had three eighth graders promoted to NHS ninth grade on June second. There will be no Governance Council meeting in July. We'll meet again August eighth or fifteenth, depending on the number of members who will be available. Um, so congratulations to those eighth graders being promoted to the high school. Um, and thank you, Anita, for the update. Anything else to share with that too?
No. Thank you.
Moving along this evening. Uh, overarching results, twenty one, twenty two.
So as we had talked about last week at the board workshop, we're culminating the overarching results for the year. So in your, uh, in the update and in the packet, you certainly can take a look back at all the different presenters that we've had coming and talking across the district.
Yep, and we, we greatly appreciated learning about all the different areas that the district is teaching in and even with athletics as well. So we'll continue to do that in the next coming school year.
And just to, to plan ahead here, athletic, we don't have an athletic presentation either today.
Yep. Not a problem. As long as everyone's staying hydrated, we're good.
Yes.
Um, communicating with the board. So again, we have Alexa Borboom and Ryder Abbey here tonight. Is there anything the two of you wanted to share?
Um, just wanted to let you all know that, um, Lint Crew is working to invite all the new freshmen in and they're, we're sending four students to Chicago at the end of this month for the FBLA National Conference. And then we're holding another blood drive, um, on June twenty eighth here at Humke.
Awesome. When, um, what time is the blood drive at, at Humke?
Ten AM.
Ten AM? And then is that in the cafeteria?
In the gym.
In the gym. All right, so everybody put that in your calendar.
Thank you for continuing that. I think that's a, that was real, a high interest last year. You're actually done it for two years, haven't you?
Yeah, this will be our sixth one.
Oh, this, okay.
You know, there's a need.
Is there advanced setup for that?
Of what?
Is there advanced setup for that?
Yeah.
So, okay.
It's on the Nacusa Student Council Facebook page, the link is.
Well, thank you, um, for the update. We'll look forward to, um, more things that come, so thank you both. Um, no athletic program updates. Just wanted to say summer school started, so if you haven't signed up, please do so. Not a bad thing to do if you're in athletic program this year. And then we're gonna head over to Brian Grill, our Director of Student Services.
Okay, good evening. So Lynn and I are actually gonna team this update a little bit together. So I'll let her start and then I'll go into my Medicaid part.
So Brian wants to talk about Medicaid, and I just wanted to give you a little background on how the funding works for Medicaid. So we have our general fund, which is Fund Ten, and we have our special education fund, which is Fund Twenty Seven. And every year, the Fund Twenty Seven, our special education run, a fund runs in the red. And by law, we cannot have that fund in the red. So what happens is, we do an annual transfer from Fund Ten into Fund Twenty Seven, and it averages about one point two million dollars a year. So that's kind of the background, and now Brian's gonna talk about the Medicaid portion.
So to save you guys on that Fund Ten, this Fund Twenty Seven transfer, what we do, our speech and language pathologists are, we contract with CISA for occupational therapy, physical therapy. Some of their services, since they are medically based services, we can submit billing to Medicaid and get reimbursement on those things. So part of what I've been doing end of the year, we have a phenomenal team who is very on top of their billing. So everything is submitted every year and we've worked with, we work with Kyle's Consulting to make sure we don't overclaim. And then, cause if you overclaim, you can be in recruitment. We have not been in recruitment for five years now.
At least, yes.
And so really working with this consulting company, we have maximized what we are billing for. So I just wanted to give you an update that for our services of speech OTPT this year, they have brought in almost, it's fifty eight thousand nine hundred ninety three dollars and sixty nine cents to save you on that fund transfer. So by them claiming all their services and their minutes and being on top of it, that's just money that they have saved the district. So I wanna recognize them for all their efforts because on top of their regular paperwork for special education with IP, things like that, they have to go in and document all of their therapy sessions, what they're working on, and it's time consuming, but it does help us greatly as a district. So that's reimbursement from that. Then we also get what's called a MAC payment. And you're gonna help me maybe explain this one. A MAC payment is different, cause that's not direct therapy services.
It's support.
It's the support, so this is our educational assistance. When they're billing for their service to help kids, students with disabilities, that's what we're getting reimbursed for our educational assistance service. And that so far this year, we got fifty one thousand four hundred and three dollars and sixty eight cents. So combined total, they have saved the district over a hundred thousand dollars in that fund transfer.
And Medicaid is a federal program, so that means it is subject to a serious audit at the end of the year, which we did receive last year. And the reason it's a, if it's a federal audit, you know there's a mound of paperwork to go with it. So, um, we got audited last year and we had absolutely no findings on Medicaid, which is pretty phenomenal, because typically there are findings on Medicaid. So that just proves or goes to show you how much work that Brian's team puts into that to make sure that we have every T crossed and every I dotted.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, so, um, on that, on that audit, should you find something, does that go into being with the overcharge then?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
It could be a process that you're not following.
Could be a process.
Yeah.
That they would just say, hey, you don't get this.
Correct, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And then you work through the whole year to prove that you've corrected that process.
Okay, all right.
The overbilling comes in like, say, for our educational assistance. Sometimes this is where we have checks and balances in place. When our educational assistants submit their monthly minutes, like Anne goes through, so say, we have two educational assistants working with the same kid, and we make sure their minutes don't add up to more than what's in a school day in assisting. Cause sometimes, you know, just if they're in passing and they don't connect with each other to say, this is how many minutes I work with the student, this is how many minutes you work, sometimes their minutes end up being more. So Anne has been my checks and balance. She looks at that to make sure that we're not doing that. Or she also cross checks it with attendance to make sure we're not claiming minutes for kids when they weren't in school. And those are some of the audit things that they look at to make sure you're not saying, oh, a kid has never missed a day of school, then the attendance list shows. And then part of that MAC is also transportation, cause we get some of that reimbursed. So that's where we have transportation logs and Anne also checks attendance, and we're marking kids for that correctly.
Is, is there a possibility that two of them could work together on the same, at the same time with the, with the kid or no?
Even if they do work together, how Medicaid looks at it, if you're billing for more minutes than in a day, it doesn't matter, like we could sit there and debate.
So you don't, you just don't do that?
Correct.
Okay.
Just so that way we don't run into questioning, ask why, oh, two people are at the same.
You are, you are better off if they work together for an hour, just pay, okay, I'll bill for the hour, you won't, and we won't have a problem.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
Darren, did you have a question or you go ahead?
Is he raising his hand?
He hit his mic.
No, I, I was okay, I was just stopping, I jumped in on the financial stuff here, but I didn't have any questions.
All right, thank you.
So yeah, that's just my update. We've just been cleaning up Medicaid for the end of the year to make sure, because that's just to date. So we'll still be getting a payment yet in the end of June, beginning of July for the end of the school year.
Sure.
But I just wanted to recognize our team for all their work on that because, like I said, that's over a hundred thousand dollars that the district doesn't have to use in their Fund Ten transfer.
Well, and prior to this, I mean, we, we've been using Kyle's now for about ten years, I think.
Yeah.
And prior to that, it was a mess. I mean, just a complete disaster. So I was so thankful that Michelle came in and worked with us
Yep.
to get this up and running, because it's a nightmare. I, I, it's just a nightmare.
And if not done correctly, you have some districts that have multiple years where they're in recruitment, where they're billing for Medicaid, but they're getting none of the money. You're going back to pay the feds, cause you claim too much. So we're in that sweet spot where we want to stay to be like, we're getting money back, we don't owe anything.
Okay. No, I think that this is good, it's a nice little chunk, um, that we don't have to owe, so.
Thank you for your work on it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's just been going.
Yeah.
We do.
Good to you. We try.
Um, is there anything that had to be tied in with that, with your section, Lynn?
No, I'm good, no, we're good.
Or are we just, we're hopping, we're hopping over to politics.
Yep.
Wow.
All right, look at that.
Teamwork, right there.
Piece of the priceless one, I like that.
Perfect, so we had a really good board workshop, um, a lot of great communication and conversations. So I'm gonna jump into operational expectations, OE one. I'm gonna have Terry, um, read that for us here.
I will absolutely do that. So, uh, the, I'm gonna read the district administrator's interpretation. All decisions made, actions taken, practices and activities by employees and students in the district will be legal, ethical, safe, respectful, and responsible in accordance with board policies. Such decisions and actions will be made with the best interest and future success of the district as a priority. And that is operational expectations, OE one.
Yep, and I think, I tried to highlight our conversation here, um, but what I have is that we align practices to budget policies, um, and then we support all result policies. Um, and I think that's kind of the biggest thing to highlight is that, I mean, we support everything that is going on as a board. Um, anybody else wanna chime in with OE one? Um, the only, the only, I guess not weakness, just a con of, of this policy is, um, to use the grant money closer to professional development. So just something that we can look into as time goes on, so. But other than that, I think we had a good conversation for OE one. And with that, I'm just looking for a motion to approve OE one.
So. Second?
First and second, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, none. Uh, motion carried, thank you. OE thirteen facilities management. I'll have you read that again.
Absolutely. So under OE thirteen facilities, operational expectations, annually, the board shall assure that physical facilities support the accomplishment of the board's results policies. So would you like me to read? So, so we need a, a plan that establishes priorities for construction, renovation, and maintenance. Um, that plan needs to include maintenance costs, uh, schedules for preventative maintenance, uh, schedules for system replacement, uh, and also looks at assumptions, uh, to include growth patterns and financial and human impact. Uh, number two, project life cycle costs as capital decisions are made. Uh, also assure that facilities are safe, clean, and properly maintained. And the fourth point is develop and consistently administer facilities using guidelines, uh, like an acceptable use policy around using our facilities. Uh, clear user expectations, including behavior, cleanup, security, insurance, damage repair, and then consequences and enforcement procedures for public users.
Um, and I think this is probably one of the biggest conversations we had. We had Lynn with us at our workshop. Um, she provided us with a nice, um, spreadsheet and checklist and a priority list of all the things that were needed in the district and then kind of ranked them from top priority. Um, so definitely a positive to prioritize the highest needs. Um, and then we're also discussing, and we have a motion being proactive on the track, turf and complex that we have. Um, I guess the only thing is, um, to start recycle, the thing that we wanna put in motion is to start to recycle the play on the vehicles, but that's just something to work on as time moves forward, so. Um, anything, um, Darren or anybody else wanna chime in on facility?
We commented that this list was something, uh, long needed because in the years past, we just kinda fixed things when they broke and, uh, didn't really have a plan for it. But now that we have a, a schedule of things that need to be done, we could schedule them as we have funds to do it and we don't have to think about it too far in advance when it happens.
We're going away from band-aiding
Yeah.
to getting things done right. So we don't have to do it again.
The ounce of prevention, as they say.
Oh, yeah, we're high on provamatos.
Um, can I just say something? This is kinda in line with the facilities. So I'm at the fields today doing my thing with the open fields and got done and I was dragging the field and it was hot and I was tired. And I'm walking back from the parking, in the parking lot, and there's this guy and this gal are looking at the complex, right? And then they walk back to their car and I meet them just about at their car as I'm walking through. And I go, would you like a tour? It comes out, his name's Kate Hewitt, graduate of two thousand and one, hasn't been here since, I mean, right out of school, enlisted into the Marines, has not been back to the, to the, to Nacusa.
Is that right?
Saw the facilities, I, I, I took him everywhere and he's just like, took him on the track the whole nine yards, you know? He was really impressed. And then he wanted to, to go in and see the, you know, see the addition onto the school and he's like, wow, this is really cool.
Nice.
He came away impressed, so that was kinda just a little.
Yeah, no.
Just kinda neat, you know?
Thanks for sharing, that just reminds me, you know, I wanna stay on topic with the agenda, but do we have something for the summer where the community can, can walk around the track without it being locked up?
Yeah, we're actually, we did talk about that. So, um, I know John Thomas and Paul Han have been working with Steve to create some sort of fencing, so, um, we just have to reconfigure the fencing a little bit.
Okay.
But our plan is to make sure that the community has access to that track.
Sure, perfect.
Absolutely.
I just couldn't remember if we touched on it, so, okay, perfect.
Yep, yep.
No, thank you.
And, and NYBSA is holding softball games there this summer.
Okay.
And, and they're using the concession stand, they use the.
Oh, good, okay.
I bought a lawyer there tonight from them, so.
Ah.
Before I come here, so.
Yeah. Good.
Um, other than, you know, when I use it.
Sure.
So it's, it's kinda nice. So, yep, it's being used, it's being used by a lot of, a lot of people.
There's a big crowd there tonight, a really big crowd.
Well, I think we can all agree that a lot of good things are coming out of OE thirteen, or OE thirteen, uh, sorry about that. Um, so at this time, just gonna look for your motion to approve.
So.
First and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, none, motion carried, thank you. We are on GP two, uh, Governance Commitment. I'll have you read that one for us, Steve.
All right, the Nacusa Board of Education supports welfare and education, students, the interest of the community, and the work of the staff. The board shall hold itself accountable to property taxpayers of the school district who are owners of the district by ensuring that all of its actions are consistent with the board's policies and in compliance with state and federal statutes and regulations. In order to meet these obligations and model its ex, model its expectations for the learning enterprise, at the core of the district, the board commits to engage in rigorous and continuous development improvement of its capacity to govern, use its policies to divide, define its values and expectations, assure the organization achieves the results described in its results policies, and assure the district operates within the parameters described in its operational expectations, and abide by the, by its policy commitments contained in the board, district administrator relations and governance processes.
Pretty, pretty powerful, uh, paragraph, um, but I think, you know, as a district as a whole and as a board, um, and administration, that we're a lot more knit with the policy and everything going on, so. Um, any conversations with that? I think it was pretty straightforward, um, which is, which is nice, so. Um, Darren, anything on, anything for that? I think we, I think it was a pretty straightforward conversation for.
Yeah, I think we had a good.
You froze. Say that, say that one more time, Dave, or Darren. You froze up.
Well, yeah, I think, uh, I think we covered that really well on Thursday's workshop, uh, I don't, I, I mean, I think.
Sounds like it went well, so.
Go ahead.
All right, we got his blessing, so, um, at this time, we're gonna look for a motion to approve GP, uh, two Governance Commitment.
So move.
Got a first.
Also a second.
Second. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried. Just a couple more here, uh, GP six.
And I got an interpretation, I'll shorten this up.
Perfect.
The board will rarely use, the board will rarely use committees and only to assist with the board's work. Committees will not instruct the staff or district administrator and will only speak on behalf of the full board when authorized to do so. Committees will only be organized with the approval of the full board and will be dissolved at the conclusion of their assignment.
Yeah, so pretty straightforward, we discussed this, um, we oversee a lot of committees, we have, you know, we interpret a few things and kind of help guide and align some stuff, but we don't really, you know, jump in and, some of the committees were for the athletic complex. Um, I know there's one forming for scholarships, so it's just things that we kind of oversee and, and take a look at here and there, so. Any, any conversations with that? I know it's another straightforward one, um, for us tonight, so. All right, I, at this time, just gonna look for a motion for GP six.
So move.
Second.
First, second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, so motion carried. So our last one here is overarching results, R one.
So in looking at the overarching results throughout this last year, we focused in on all four results in a quarterly kind of a way. And so what is reflected here are the presentations that the board has witnessed and been brought, been brought forward to the board that really outlines those four different policies. So at this time, I'd move, uh, to, you know, to have the board approve.
Yeah, definitely, I think we all enjoyed.
The overarching results.
We all enjoyed hearing about different areas in the district and the sports too, so. Um, unless there's room for improvement, you guys can mention it.
Well, and I, I, I guess I would like to know, you know, certainly we've done the athletic work. I mean, are there some other things? Would you like us to continue to focus in on those results policies? And have.
Yeah, I.
And certainly we've switched it up a little bit here and there, but.
Even like extracurricular, like hearing about, I guess, like what choir's doing for the play or what band.
Yeah.
Just, just to mix things up, you know, not just about athletics or academics, just other things to yourself.
I mean, Nathan always kept us up to speed on like FBLA and.
Oh, of course, yeah, so, you know, if someone wants to talk about.
Yeah, clubs, maybe clubs should be done, yeah.
Yeah, do you wanna?
I'll do chess.
Talk about chess sometime, you know?
I actually showed those people the, uh, cause we do have our chess trophies on display now, finally.
Oh, really? Where?
Right, as soon as you walk in the door, you go to the left, first trophy case on the right.
At the middle school?
You know, I think, you know, yeah, no, no, at the high school.
I gotta look at that, okay.
But they don't have our national trophies in there, they'll find it.
Anything else? Darren, anything that you wanna see brought forward?
Well, I guess, the one thing we discussed.
No, I'm very well.
One thing we did discuss last Thursday was just like, maybe something, I don't know, what it would take to get some play, host some playoff games or things like, with some of our complexes and things like that as an extra kind of a fund, you know, I mean, cause it would be a little extra money in our court.
Yeah.
Darren brought that up, I gotta know it to check in with Paul on that.
Yeah, that's, that's a different policy, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, but yeah, we'll, we'll add that to our, um, our running list here, um.
But yeah, we should definitely be looking at, um, baseball, football stuff for sure, probably softball too.
Well, we are hosting a softball tournament, June twenty fifth to twenty sixth.
Awesome, that gets started somewhere, right?
Yeah, so it starts, I mean, it's summer league, but it's something.
Yeah, that's what Darren was talking about with, uh, Legion stuff, so.
Yep, it's.
Good, thank you.
All right, well, it sounds like we're all in favor of this, so just looking for a motion.
So move.
Got a first, second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none, motion carried for R one overarching results. We are now gonna head into other board work. Um, back over to Lynn, our business manager.
Okay, so I'm gonna talk about the, uh, school nutrition program breakfast and lunch prices. Just wanna give you a little history. Uh, back in March twentieth, after the pandemic hit, the federal government issued waivers that basically allowed school districts to serve meals for free. So that was in effect until June thirtieth of two thousand twenty two. Those waivers are expiring, which means that we have to start charging our students that do not qualify for free and reduced, um, status. And we also have to start filling out the free and reduced applications. Uh, we're basically going back to the old ways. Um, prior to, uh, Fund Fifty or prior to the pandemic, our food school nutrition program was operating in the red, and it was in the red close to about a hundred thousand dollars. When it's in the red, we are forced to use a tool at, uh, DPI that dictates how much we can charge per meal. It typically, we have been raising prices ten cents every year just to maintain a, a status quo in Fund Fifty, which is our school nutrition program. For the first year since two thousand thirteen, fourteen, we are operating in the black, which is a celebration like you would not believe. Not only does Fund Ten, our instructional fund, have to transfer money into Fund Fifty, they can keep it for instruction. Fund Fifty is sustaining itself. So that means that we do not have to use DPI's tool to dictate our lunch prices. We, as a board, can decide how much we are going to charge each student. So I just wanna give out a kudos to our school nutrition staff. They have worked through the pandemic. They have worked through the pandemic, through staff shortages, through food shortages, through, through supply chain issues, and they have still provided meals to our students, and that is not, uh, an easy task. They would find out in the morning before they served students that they are not getting a main ingredient. So they had to scramble to try and figure out what they're gonna make for the students before lunch. So I give them a ton of credit, they work tirelessly, and usually with a lot of negative criticism. And that, that is hard to work, it's a hard culture to work under, but they did it flawlessly, and I really commend them.
Yeah, I think, I, I think the lunch program has been through a lot, and and it, it's true that they would, they would hop on buses to deliver and deliver meals too, so, and that's, a lot of schools can't say that they've done something like that, so it's just another thing to celebrate. Um, and I wish they would call it operating in the green instead of the black, cause it doesn't sound like.
Doesn't sound any better.
So, accountants like black.
Yeah. So.
So, um, what we're, when I, when I looked at the school nutrition program and how we're operating in the black, I, uh, looked at our prices that we charged prior to the pandemic, and I am recommending that we keep the prices the same, no increase whatsoever, and that is in, uh, in your packet too.
Absolutely, I just have, uh, the only follow-up question I have is how are we making sure,
Yeah.
I, I know in years past, we had a hard time getting the free and reduced application to families. What are we going to do to make sure that those kids, or those kids' families get those application?
So, uh, DPI has been working with the federal government, and we have a process called direct certification, which means we download our student, students' information into this federal program. The federal program does their magic, and they give us back a file that indicates, according to the, to the government, who is free and who is reduced and who has to pay. They have expanded that program to include Medicaid eligible families as well.
Okay.
So, probably about, oh, I would say, close to eighty percent of our free and reduced students that qualify, qualify through direct certification.
Nice.
We get, uh, we send out applications to every family, no matter what.
Okay.
We do, Diana and I work on it throughout the summer.
Awesome.
And, um, when the applications I get back that qualify for free and reduce are maybe ten percent. So direct certification is, if they don't qualify for direct certification, more than likely, they're not going to qualify.
Okay.
So, um, the direct certification is, is a very useful tool.
Sure, yeah, I just wanted to make sure, so.
Yeah, I agree.
Right.
So we had, uh, for a while, we had a bunch of, uh, students that were in arrears of their payments. When they didn't have free and reduced, they had to pay for their, did we get that resolved with, with most of the students?
Most of them, yes, and we still are sending students to, families to collections every year at the end of the year.
Okay.
Uh, we notify them throughout the year every, well, I think it's every two weeks. We send out notifications that, hey, put money in your account, hey, put money in your account. Because at time of graduation, if they have a negative balance in their lunch account, they don't want.
Hmm.
So it's, we have to be serious, because if we don't, if we don't do this,
Yeah.
then we are gonna be in the red again, which means instruction is gonna have to pay for school nutrition again, which means we have to follow the tool to set our prices, it's a domino effect, so.
Yeah.
But we're pretty good right now, I think, Diana.
Oh, yeah, cause it's been free.
Yeah, it's been free, yeah. So we, we don't wanna get into that rut again, so.
We're.
Right.
Sure, well, thank you, um, again, for all your work on that, and, and thanks again to our, our nutrition and kitchen staff, um.
Yeah.
I have a question, Cody.
Sure, yup.
Alright, let's see if we could get through this, the audio break it up. Um, you know, we're in the black right now, but are we gonna fall back into red, maybe you guys talk to this, cause the audio is gonna break it up, but didn't we get a lot, a lot of subsidies from the government to pay for all these meals, is that why we're in the black?
That's part of the reason, part of the reason is also staffing. Uh, prior to, uh, Tagger being on board, we had a lot of full-time people with full-time benefits, and that was extremely expensive. We are also paying full prices for food, uh, which means that we did not have the luxury of purchasing bulk the way Tagger does, so when you purchase in bulk, you get a lot cheaper price. If you purchase just one small school district like we do, we're gonna pay a higher price.
Right.
So.
So, so your plans take into consideration that, uh, these government COVID pandemic stuff is gonna be there, is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. That's fine.
Thank you.
Tagger, what's our contract like, you like with them, what's our setup with them?
I love it, I mean, I, I.
Okay, so we're, I mean, I mean, we're, we're not.
Oh.
I mean, it's not going up, it's not going, you know, where's?
It's going up at the, not the inflation rate, it's the CPI rate, and that is by law, you have to do that.
Okay, alright. Okay, that's fine, I just wondered where we were at.
Yeah. Yep, 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 understood.
You know, cause I, cause I, I knew when we voted on that, it was okay, this is what it is now.
Yep, yep, absolutely.
But is it gonna be five years from now?
And even with that, I mean, we're still operating in the black, so.
Okay, very good.
Yeah.
Alright.
It's good news.
Yeah.
Yes, definitely, um, alright, so I'm gonna look for your motion to approve the breakfast lunch prices.
I'm sorry.
So move.
First and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, none, motion carried, thank you.
I, I'll make them know that, yeah.
And Darren, you can see Lynn's, uh, preliminary budget report, can you on your screen?
Yes.
Yes, I did, yup.
Okay, alright, that's okay.
Okay, so I gotta stand up for this, so I don't have to lean over everybody.
Yeah.
Um, so, uh, this is the month that we do our preliminary budget for, uh, the following school year. Carrie, if you want, I just love that picture, it's so good, it's cute to be.
I do too.
You just like the money coming out.
Yeah.
Money in the.
So just as a reminder, our dis- our district's fiscal year is from July first through June thirtieth. We have a biennial budget at the state level, which is, uh, every two years, typically in June or July, they pass a budget. Uh, the state's fiscal year is also June first through July, July, July first through June thirtieth. Uh, they signed their fiscal budget, the twenty-one, twenty-three, um, biennial budget, uh, to law on July eighth, twenty twenty-one. Now, there were some years that they didn't sign that law until September, October, and we were scrambling. So, um, it's, it's a good thing that, uh, they got together and passed the budget. So what is in the state budget that pertains to schools? No per pupil adjustment in twenty-one, twenty-two, or twenty-two, twenty-three, what does that mean? We have a revenue limit formula, and for the revenue limit for, formula, for each FTE student that we have, uh, we get a dollar amount for that, and typically, the state will plug more money on that dollar amount for, uh, to multiply it by our student FTE. In this budget, there was no adjustment for that, so it stays stagnant from the prior biennial budget. There is no increase to the low revenue limit ceiling, which means that we have a cap of ten thousand dollars per student. That's the low revenue limit ceiling, I know it sounds ridiculous, but we cannot go above it, period. It's ten thousand dollars and that's it. There are some districts that, um, are at ninety-five hundred, there are some are at ninety-four, so they have a ways to go up. We're at the max, so we are frozen. That is also in the revenue or in the funding formula. We have an increase in the general aid pot by a hundred million in twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-two, twenty-three, two hundred and eight, two hundred and ninety-eight million. So, don't get excited over this, because the pot is really, really big, and Milwaukee gets most of it. So, when we get an increase in the general pot aid, we hardly see a thing, because we are so small. The per pupil categorical aid is maintained at seven hundred forty-two dollars, per pupil for twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-two, twenty-three. So the categorical aid is outside of the revenue limit and funding formula. So we have the funding formula over here for the state aid, and then we get something over here called categorical aid. So, because we are in, I will say negative tertiary, what that means is we are so rich that we have to give some of our aid to some unfortunate districts, you know, like Pewaki. Yeah, so that's what the state says, we are so rich that we have to give some of our aid away. So when they put more money in the pot, it does nothing for us, because it just lowers our negative tertiary. But if you go over here and you get seven hundred forty-two dollars per kit, that's right away. There's no funding formula that they have to, you know, fool around with, we get seven hundred forty-two bucks per kit. So we like categorical aid a lot. Next, oh, there we go. So, uh, what's our budget process? In June, the board approves the prelim- preliminary budget beginning on July first. It basically authorizes spending from July first until the final budget is approved in October. So July through September, we continue to work on staffing, we're trying to fill positions, we're, we're, um, looking at the compensation, we're looking at building budgets, we're just, it's a lot of work from now and through September. October is when all the lightning strikes hit. That means that the revenue limit worksheet, which dictates how much money we can assess taxpayers and receive in state aid, finally gets completed, all the little pieces of the puzzle finally gets plugged into that revenue limit worksheet, the final figure on October fifteenth. That's why we have to have our annual meeting after October fifteenth. Because you don't wanna pass a final budget with maybe, uh, I think this is what's gonna happen. You wanna know what's gonna happen, so we wait until after October fifteenth to pass our budget. So, again, there are many variables on the revenue limit worksheet that are not available October. Uh, our annual meeting is after Oc- October fifteenth, you know, so it's final. And, um, right now, the bu- the preliminary budget that we're looking at tonight, it's just a rollover from twenty-one, twenty-two, that's all I did, I didn't put a lot of effort into it because we don't know anything. So what does the twenty-two, twenty-three budget look like? Uh, here are our revenues, a little over nineteen million, uh, I can go through every single one. Um, I'll go through the highlights, I guess, local sources is where are we, we have our tax revenue. Uh, interdistrict, inter- interdistrict is open enrollment. State sources, that's our state aid, our categorical aid I just talked about, our per pupil, little over five million. Federal sources is all of our federal grants with the mounds and mounds of red tape. Yeah.
Alright.
Yeah, so all of those pieces come up to about a little over nineteen million. Next. And here are our expenses. Uh, our salaries and benefits represent about sixty-four percent of our operating budget, which is a little over twelve million, and I'm gonna segue for a minute. I went to Manitoba, Canada for, um, one of my duties as an international board member, and we were talking about their funding, and they're in the process of, uh, revamping their whole funding system. You talk about a bunch of nervous nannies, holy cow. So anyway, we were talking about salaries and benefits, and, um, they wanted to know how much of our budget represents salaries and benefits, and I said probably about sixty-five percent, and they're averaging seventy-five to seventy-seven percent of their budget is salaries and benefits. So they only have authority over twenty-three percent of their budget. It, it, it just blew my mind away, so anyway, that was.
Yeah, it's a sidebar.
It was a little sidebar, yeah, so, okay, so then we have, um, purchase services, which a portion of buildings and grounds, portion, a portion of technology, little over five million. Non-capital is just stuff, uh, little over one million, and all of that, oh shoot, it gets cut off, Carrie, I'm sorry. All of that adds up to the same dollar amount as the revenues.
How can I move it up?
I don't, and it's.
It's nineteen thou- nineteen million one hundred forty-two thousand five hundred thirty-seven.
Yeah, so it's, it's basically showing a balanced budget, sorry. So we have, we know a few of the increases already, but it's not reflected in the budget that I'm presenting to you. We know salaries are gonna go up based on the compensation plan that was approved by, by the board on July twenty-first, twenty twenty. Rick is in the process of getting that budget together. Um, health insurance, we did increase by nine point five percent, there are some districts that are double-digit increases, and I'm talking sixteen to eighteen percent, I know one district that went up twenty-five percent. Yeah, it's crazy, we are very lucky with a nine point five. Bus transportation, it's increased by two, two point five percent, and that's normal. So what are our next steps, we're gonna complete the revenue limit worksheet, which again dictates how much money we can assess taxpayers and how much we receive in state aid, and I will present the final budget to the school board at the October twenty twenty-two board meeting. Uh, so to authorize spending for the first three and a half months of the fiscal year, administration is recommending the school board approve the twenty-two, twenty-three preliminary budget as presented.
I think it's a good plan.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, the teachers are about to get big.
Are you looking for motion?
I'm on it.
Yeah, and I know, I know a lot of it is, you know, there's nothing you can do about the increases, and especially with health insurance, and I always worry about the increase in health insurance, but hearing about other schools, I'm not gonna stress too much about it, so.
No, we are very lucky with the consortium, I mean, we have increased buying power, which is so much better than just going out on our own.
Yeah. Right. Right.
We have districts that are trying to get into our consortium, and we won't allow them, because it'll increase our prices, so. Yeah.
That is. Form your own.
That's right.
So, so you didn't mention that we don't get paid about three or four times a year, and, uh, when is the next time we get paid?
Oh, for the state aid?
Well, any other money that comes in.
Oh, yeah, so because we are so, uh, uh, a normal school district is two-thirds funding, and the two-thirds funding, they mean two-thirds funded by the state, one-third funded by the taxpayers. Well, we're the opposite, we're two-thirds funded by the, by the taxpayers, and one-third funded by the state. So if we're two-thirds funded by the taxpayers, the bulk of our money comes in in January, February, April, and August, four times. So we get a little money from state aid, but not enough to pay the bills, I guess. So that's the reason why we have to short-term borrow, just so we can get through the lean months, and that's usually June and December that are pretty lean.
Thank you, Lynn.
We have any, any questions on this, Darren, I know you're reading through some things, did you have any questions with, um, Lynn's presentation?
Uh, no, no, it's, um, it is straightforward, we just, those increases are gonna be there, um. So, the adjustments will come over the summer and the rest of the budget, so.
Well, then, I guess at this time, I will look for your motion to approve the twenty-two, twenty-three preliminary budget.
So move.
Second. Got a first and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Aye.
Aye.
None, motion carried. We have two more here with Lynn, next one is the membership audit report.
Okay, so we are required by state statute to count our resident students two times a year. Third Friday in September, second Friday in January, and it's a lot more complicated than what it seems. So, um, there's a lot of rules that you have to follow, there's a lot of hoops that you have to jump through, and these numbers are used for the state aid funding formula. So DPI wants to make sure that those numbers are right. So they do a selection of districts to be audited for those numbers. Typically, you get audited once every four years. If you're late submitting your numbers, uh, for the third Friday count, the second Friday in January, those are usually due two weeks after those dates, you are automatically selected for an audit, no matter what, doesn't matter if you're a minute late, you're audited. Uh, the other item that you can, there's another reason you get selected for an audit, is by chance. So let's say they put all the districts in a hat and they pull your name out, you could be selected for an audit for three, you know, three years in a row, it doesn't matter. But because it's a random selection. Typically, it's every four years you get selected for an audit. Our last audit was in nineteen twenty, we got selected this year, not because we were late with any of our numbers, we were just.
Nineteen twenty.
Nineteen twenty, you said.
Nineteen twenty, yes.
Twenty twenty, probably.
Twenty, no, two thousand nineteen, two one, two thousand twenty.
Twenty nineteen. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, sorry, eight minutes.
Twenty nineteen, Darren, twenty nineteen.
Yeah, twenty, god, this is so confusing, we got twenty thousand different numbers. So anyway, um, we got audited back then, and we didn't have any findings. We were audited this year for our numbers, and the, the thing about the pandemic that was good for operations is that it forced our auditors to do things virtually. So our whole audit for our membership audit was done virtually, and it worked out beautifully. So again, the audit is included in your packet, uh, they didn't audit on both of our numbers, and they could not find any exceptions whatsoever, so it was a clean audit.
Awesome.
I'm asking for approval.
Um, any questions for Lynn on this?
Thank you.
Alright, um, so at this time, I will push for your motion to approve the membership audit.
So move.
First and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none, motion carried, thank you, and our last one here, um, it looks like it's another approval, but this one says an update, so are we doing an approval or an update on, uh, annual review?
I think it's just an, uh, update, isn't it?
Well, it typically is an approval by the board, they asked, when we first implemented this, they wanted it to come back every year.
Oh. Okay.
Okay, I will, I will get that in there, um, so an annual review update from, um, Lynn of, is it OPA?
OPA.
Yeah, it's OPEP, other post-employment benefits.
OPA.
So back when districts could tax as much money as they needed to, um, make the school district run, uh, there was a little thing called other post-employment benefits, and it basically was a benefit for staff to receive when they reach, when they turn fifty-five, we would pay. we would pay for so much of their health insurance. Typically, we paid seven to eight years, or sometimes we even paid all the way up to when they reached sixty-five. So it was a common benefit for school districts that they, that retirees received, we would pay for their health insurance in full. It was expensive. So back in two thousand thirteen, fourteen, our annual expense for this benefit that came right off the top of the budget was a little under eight-hundred thousand dollars. It was huge. It got to the point when we implemented revenue limits, when the state says, you know what? You cannot tax as much as you want to anymore, there's gonna be a limit on how much money you can receive. So when that happened, it just started building. Because we had all these retirees going, we had the union, and we had a cap on how much men- revenue we could receive. So something doesn't work. So our liability kept rising, we had to pay that no matter what. And we had all these other expenses that we had to pay, but no, not enough revenue coming in. That's why districts got into trouble, one of the reasons it got into trouble. When they passed Act Ten, we acted immediately and said, we have gotta change that benefit or we're going to go broke. So we did, and it was a gradual change. And I included the um, the approved change that happened on May fourteenth, two thousand twelve. Basically, the teachers had a choice, they could choose group one, health insurance, or group two, they could use, they could choose a current active tax sheltered annuity deposit. So back then, when that happened, there was fifty stu- fifty teachers or fifty staff members eligible, thirty chose group one, twenty chose group two. Currently, the district has thirteen members still active in group one and nine members active in group two. But as you can see in twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two, we are down to a liability of one hundred fifty-five thousand four hundred dollars. It's manageable.
Sounds better than eight-hundred.
Oh my god. Yeah, it was, it was horrible. So every year, we um, the board back then wanted to, us to review it and make a recommendation to either change the benefit or to leave it the way it is. Well, in order to do that, you would need to see our history of our family and single premiums. Uh, we go over it, we look at it, I talked to Rick, we could talk it through. And at this point, we are asking that you keep the benefit the same. We do not want any changes to the benefit. We're recommending.
So if that's your guys' recommendation, um, unless there's any discussions, we will move forward with that.
I will make the motion to that effect.
I just slow, slow down, cuz I have nothing here to write this in.
Sure, so it'll be um, so it'll be the um, annual um, OPA, O P E B.
Approve the annual, yeah, okay. A hush fell over the crowd.
Everyone's staying high, Jerry.
Okay, I just got it at that, that will obviously have what's going on.
Alright.
Looking for motion there.
I saw one, had motion, so we can.
Motion.
First.
Second.
A second, um, by Mark. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? None, uh, motion carried. Thank you. Alright, and now we have our high school principal, John Spray, with us, that.
Oh, elementary principal.
Why did I say?
A G R.
He's not drinking enough water.
It's, it's low on water, Cody.
Yeah.
Um, AGR end of semester review.
Well, thank you, Cody. First, first of all, it's uh, always tough to follow Lynn cuz she does such a great job and she provides a lot of great information, so thank you, Lynn, on that. Um, for those, just a quick review, AGR is one of those blocks of money that we get through state by participating in, call it this program.
Categorical aid.
Categorical aid. So this is one of those things that in agreement to doing that, we have to, I have to uh, provide a bi-annual report, and this is the one that I'm doing right now. So with that being said, we in the building set goals related to this. We monitor learning, we track it and where it is. And humky, one of the things that we're focusing on is um, big goals of, well, we want all kids to be at grade level and we want all kids to be and demonstrate cares. Then after that, we're working to create a school where they're challenged, healthy, engaged, safe, and supportive. And by doing that, then we say, okay, what are the goals that we're shooting for? Well, in the area of reading, if we can get eighty percent of our kids at grade level, that's fidelity, that's where we wanna be in order to do that. So we track progress in doing that. We haven't, I've shown you over the years how we're just monitoring kids and we have these data wall cards and we're moving them over. Okay, I'll talk a little bit more about where we're at with the progress. Since we've had a math coach now, we've been working on also a math data wall process and we're tracking that. And that's not as um, involved, just because when you think about an elementary school day, lots of re- literacy stuff, and then math is about an hour, hour, a little more than an hour. So the math process for monitoring is a little bit more simpler, and our math coach Connie organizes that and monitors that. So on the math side of things, we've been implementing um, bridges here the last couple of years. And so we are starting to see some good upticks. One of the things that we've noted with our math AGR, we, in grades four K, five K, and first, we achieved our math goal. And it was our goal to essentially move these kids over in these categories. That doesn't necessarily mean they're at grade level, but they're moving in the direction we want. And we saw good growth in four K, five K, and first grade around those AGR goals. Um, one of the things we did discover too is that we were kind of hitting the wall in second and third grade, and we're kind of like, okay, why's that happening? And so Connie and I visited and we talked about that, and one instructional strategy we could get there. So with that being said, in math, um, three out of the five groups, again, four K, five K, for second, third, were, achieved their goal for the AGR. On the other side of literacy right now, eighty percent, that's everybody that eighty percent, that's meeting the goal. That didn't happen, none of the groups made that. Um, and again, we're tracking it based on a system that we've been triangulating kids' progress and learning by these different measures. Um, right now, none of those groups made that. Roughly right now, going down the list percentage-wise, four K, fifty-seven percent, five K, thirty-five, first grade, forty-four and a half, second grade, sixty, and third, thirty-three. And so part of that process of learning right now is, okay, it helps this process, helps our teachers understand what really is, our teachers have grown so much in the process of understanding what kids need to know, understand, and be able to do it. And we're getting really good at that. And with that now, helping kids get there is part of the struggle. So in terms of literacy-wise, we're not there yet, um, that has been a struggle. Um, I, I honestly do believe we have all the right pieces in place to make it happen. It just takes time.
Sure.
So that's, there's a lot there, without it, I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
John, uh, is there any, any things that you've learned with staff that, that can explain why we haven't reached that eighty percent?
Well, I, I guess, first of all, know this, we're not alone in this category. There are kids, schools ahead of us, and there are schools behind us. But generally, right now, um, why haven't we reached that, that piece? I think there's a multitude of answers to that, there isn't just like, well, that's the one thing, that's it, if we just fix that, we're done, we're good. It's, it's a myriad of things. And so, um, one of the things that we're, what we've really been focusing on is creating that guaranteed and viable curriculum. And what we're doing is increasing the institutional knowledge of our teachers, so they know this is the rigor that this kid needs. And now, oh, okay, that's what it is, and here's how I know that where they're at. And now, here's what I'm doing to do about, and this is what I'm doing, and that's where our coaches are coming in and providing strategies to help with them with that. So that's part of the process, um, in terms of doing that, because it, it isn't just one strategy or one thing to fix it and turn it.
One of the things that probably had something to do with it was the uh, online learning that was going on the last couple of years that didn't, didn't really work that great for, for.
And our teachers have commented on that, and one of the things is, we've noticed that there's, you know, some kids, just because of the nature of learning remotely, weren't able to get some of those same opportunities. In our third grade class, if you put those kids in perspective, okay, where they were the last two years, how foundational those really elementary years are in not getting some of those strategies that they didn't get, you know, in twenty.
Is, is eighty percent uh, a goal set because some kids learn slower than others, or how, how did you?
No, we, good question, and we did, essentially, everybody has um, the same goal. And we come to that number based on the fact because we're saying, okay, that's a high bar. Okay, we want eighty percent of our kids meeting or exceeding. And so, how did we come up with that number? We said, well, that's the number we want because, you know, you've heard me talk about with behavioral data, well, eighty percent of, more than eighty percent of our kids are at zero or one behavioral. That's fidelity. We know that we have a good system in place that's meeting the needs of all our learners. Well, right now, less, around half or less than half of our kids are getting that reading, that literacy skill. And that's where it's kind of like, okay, we, we, we wanna get to eighty. You know, realistically, we should probably, just to say that we can make progress, I kind of think, I'm thinking out loud, just so to say we're making progress towards that goal, pull it back, but ultimately, we wanna be at at least eighty. And ideally, the big goal is to have all kids.
Yeah.
At, at grade level. So that's what we're striving for, and that's the system that works out there.
I know with raising kids myself.
I have no questions, John.
They, they, they all learned at a different rate, different, you know, some kids didn't learn to read right away, it took them longer, or some kids caught on to it a little lot faster, so.
Absolutely, and, and those are all variables too that come into play. Especially when you start to look at a kid who's in four K or five K, I mean, they could be almost a whole calendar year ahead of each other in terms of, so in other words, you're four and my neighbor next to me is twelve months older than you, well, that's twenty percent of your life. So developmentally, it's hard to, and so some of those things do factor out and they, and they grow, may catch up with them. Darren, you had a question, though?
Uh, yeah, so what's the realistic expectation for next year of where these numbers might? If, if a lot of things are in place, what's the expectation of where these numbers might end up next year? Obviously, if I go into eighty, that's not realistic.
You're right, and.
What can we expect?
Thank you for asking that question. As I look at it right now, um, you know, I give pause because for me, just, it's sometimes it's like, okay, what is realistic? Okay, but the thing I'll go back to before I answer that question is a question as Dave is like, you know, what is the, what is something we could do to help improve those numbers? Well, one of the things that we've been working on right now is when we have literacy instruction, uh, we do it in small group, uh, where the kids are coming in and they're getting specific skills. And one of the things that we've been working on is, okay, here we are, this is where you're at, teacher's taking notes. And now what happens is, in response to that, I'm designing my instructions to meet the needs of this kid right here. And so essentially, we, we do, when they come to the table and they work with the teacher, the kids are essentially, are essentially at the right spot. So it allows us to give the, them what they need. And then we're also providing opportunities to really allow kids to self-direct, self-regulate, and gain responsible independence through our reading process right now. So we're putting all those measures into play, we're still growing that capacity within our staff. And it's really important, honestly, to retain our instructional staff because we're committed to growing the intellectual capacity in our staff and developing them. So with that being said, it's not easy just to say, what is the number? Um, realistically, I'd like to say at least half, that, that is what, you know, we would have to talk, is what I will say is that one of our building leadership teams, we, we set this goal. Um, realistically, in my mind, I'd like to say at least half our kids are meeting or, or exceeding.
Well, and I think too, I, really good question, Darren, but I think that, that question should be posed. So if this is where kindergarten ended up this year, where are they gonna end up as first graders?
Yeah, and over the years, one of the things we've, that we've kind of learned, it's like, hey, our, we've got like, I'll make up a number, sixty percent of our kindergartners who are meeting or exceeding. And then they show up in first grade, and our first grade teachers are like, hmm, no, they're not. So through this process, we've been learning, it's like, oh, so this, it's, it's not like, you know, this, kind of, it's like, so we're really getting good at passing the batons. No, here's, so here's the expectations, and our staff really knows now. Um, that's why the assessment process is in terms of getting, um, really knowing what each teacher above and below them need and what those assessments is, we've gotten really smart at that. And that's hats off to Jackie and, and Hines and our literacy team for work that they've done to help align that process. So, we're getting smarter, we're not there, and it, it's, it's hard. And I wish I could tell you that it was great, but it's not. And we still need to get better, and that's hard because I, nothing against middle school, I was there, and I know I work hard at the high school too, but I always told my staff, you guys are the hardest working people in the district. And they do a lot to make sure that kids get their needs, um, meet what they get, but, um, it is hard work.
Well, can I just, so Darren, I, I, what I'm thinking of as you share this, and I think we can work on this, is, so as kindergarten, thi- this group of kindergartners that are now first graders scored fifty-seven percent.
Thirty-seven, thirty-five.
Or whatever it is, right? But as first graders, they've, they've, they've grown because sixty percent now have met or exceed. I think that's what you're, yeah.
Yeah, and that's where we want.
I think that would be a good, to track kids as they go through.
Yeah, and honest, I've been doing this for, let me give you these reports and I track this. We've changed the goal a little bit, but I still track every year where every kid is in the building. It would be tons of time, but I can take a look at a kid and see where they've been. Oh, well, we just got four K online this year. From five K to fourth, five K to third grade, where they've been at. And there's, there's success stories where I've seen kids who were struggling in kindergarten because they were really young, but now they're at third grade and they're exceeding, and that's exciting, and that's a commitment, you know. So there's, there's individual success stories.
But I do like that, showing how a group is progressing as they go through.
If I could provide some.
Well, yeah, cuz we always wanna make progress and uh, jumping from thirty-seven or one for eighty is not a realistic uh, idea. So it's, I think it's important to show progress, and as we all know, elementary school's the basis for the rest of schools, so.
Well, if I could, if I could provide some brief corroborating evidence just on this, because we've got them as they're coming out of the elementary school. And, and again, I'm, I'm not um, legally required to give you the same A G P from the state as John is for those, but, so I'll just keep this one brief, but we recently, I mean, a couple of years back, we changed to a more rigorous math curriculum, starting through grades, you know, K through five. And that is a lot more rigorous than what we had before. And in grades four and five, they were both saying, wow, here's where we're expecting to be, here's where they're currently at, and there's a lot of holes for patching. Every year we're talking about this, that gap is so much more easy. And there, you know, I just, I have this conversation every year with the fourth grade team, with the fifth grade team, and say, what are you seeing as far as how are we doing closing that? And they're just like, we have, we have to do so much less remediation because they're coming up with much stronger skills coming into fourth grade than they have under the previous system. And that takes time. That means that, you know, the first one, everyone can only grow so much in that gap, but we are seeing the cumulative effects that are, that those are measurable and we're very, and it's noticed in the classroom, just, hey, they can do these things in different ways, and that's noticeable on the, what, it's not just what they learn there, it's what they keep learning, what they transfer, and what moves with them to different areas. And we're seeing that side too, so I just wanna point out that we're looking the most on math, but that's made, that's made a big difference.
Sure.
Thanks, Dan.
Yeah, thank you for.
Thank you.
Collaborating that, and thank you for your, for your work, John.
Yeah.
Um, any other follow-ups or feedback? Otherwise, we will move on to Terry on the satisfaction survey.
Yeah, so in the last update, we had shared with the board the parent satisfaction survey that we did this year, and I had mentioned, uh, we were talking about at the admin meeting, I think I mentioned a hundred and seventy, we had a hundred and ninety-seven compared to a hundred and seventeen back when we did it last. So we've shared this information with the board. Each building is now looking at this data and will work with their teams to use this data to make decisions moving forward. And I'd be certainly, uh, and I, Nathan, John, do you have anything you wanna share about how you'll be using this data? And then we'll also be work, sharing, uh, putting together kind of a collective summary and putting that out on the website. But Nathan, you wanna?
So just as a note on looking at it partially, it's just, it's feedback from the parents, which is a different beast than as we're looking from students cuz they're looking for various areas. And so we're going to look at how well that works with our current outreach opportunities and saying, okay, as with anything, we're gonna come out of this saying, here's some additional things we can work on. And the things that, you know, part of it is, how much does it, what we're trying to do is working, but where's our blind spots? And we're using this primarily as opening up blind spots to, and over the summer, getting an idea of, okay, where can we create some additional um, tracks to be able to see where they're at, so.
Absolutely.
So any questions? John, did you want anything?
You know, one of the things that we did earlier, this, you know. You know, one of the things that we did earlier, this, you know, this is maybe a level of duplicity, but uh, we sent out a Title One parent survey, cause we're a Title One school and that's a whole other category of conversation. So within that parent survey, we had gotten feedback that we'd shared about that partnership and what that is. And that those questions were along the same line and one of the things, there was, there was a lot of notes of appreciation. Where are the numbers where we'd want them to be in terms of agreement? Um, and so I guess that doesn't mean we can't get better, but in terms of just really, you know, we see our role as working hand in hand with parents and community, to their kids for their future. And from what I saw, they sense that, so we're looking to maintain and continue to build on that.
I thought always good to hear positive comments from, from parents.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh no, perfect, um, I think that, you know, parents are starting to notice a change, which I think is, is a good movement moving forward, so. Any other um feedback from board members? Alright, well, thank you, um, Terry and Mr. Black and John. We are gonna move into the last bit here, our consent agenda. We have uh four resignations or retirements, if any principal wants to touch base on those, feel free.
Let me head up, John?
Okay, thank you. Hi Candy, we wish her well, Candy Lemins has been with us for multiple years. Um, I personally worked with her back at the middle school and been here at Humke as well. And uh, she's got the opportunity of presenting just to be a grandma and help out her daughter and then also just work on a side business. And she can hopefully continue to supplement our building, we thank her for that. Uh, Betsy Diaz, same thing, um, motherhood is calling and so she's spending more time with foster children and, and supporting that, so.
Sure.
That's, that's the world that she's in. We thank her for her work too and she's been with us for about six years.
And Beth Kaminsky, she started working both six, twelve, towards the end of the year shifted primarily to the high school, but just one of the things is she, even though she was with us for just one year, she made a big difference in helping set up a culture and routines on how do we support teachers. And more specifically, how do we help teachers support teachers? For example, the work that you saw that presented on the model classroom, sort of Rachel Brown, she was critical to that. And helping set up an idea of, here's how we're working and building momentum for that and talking with several teachers, that, that helped us going. And so even though she was only with us one year, it's a lot easier to maintain that structure than set it up and she was very part of the hard work of doing that and very much appreciate her work and insight for doing that.
Yeah.
Um, so Natalie Norton, she's been with us for three years, she is moving to Madison. Um, and, but she is just, as a, she's been working in special education, grade six through eight and just done miracles there. Just working very tightly together with our three teachers, a great coworker, a great advocate for the students. And in communicating, I mean, just so many strengths of being able to help students gain confidence in themselves. That just that, coming out of that, that I'm so grateful, we only had her for three years, but it was very solid three years and I'm so grateful for her time and her investment and we're all gonna miss her.
So well, thank you both and uh, I want to wish all those retiring or resigning, um, well wishes in their future. Um, and then employment, we have a new um, Humke Elementary School, a special ed teacher, a Humke Elementary School second grade teacher and then an N H F science teacher. So uh, welcome to uh those new employees coming into our district. And then I know Darren's computer's a little choppy, so I'll take his job tonight and read the donations, um.
Alright, alright.
Oh, oh hey, you know what, you're, you're sounding pretty good.
He wants to try it.
Alright, give it a shot, give it a shot.
Go ahead Darren.
Oh, you want me to try it, okay.
Yep.
Uh, backpack for kids, uh, we received three donations this month, twenty-two dollars and fifteen cents from Roll Makers. Uh, a hundred and fifty-five dollars from Bethlehem Women Admissions and fifty dollars from the Sacred Heart Collections. So, so again, all those are so appreciated. Yeah, facility, we received a non- donation.
Not an extra.
Yes, a hundred dollar anonymous donation and then five hundred dollars from Keith Johnson, our high school principal. So, um, thank you very much for our donors this month, it's greatly appreciated. Um, and thank you Darren, I'm sure you'll catch this at some point, so thank you for reading that. And then right now, I'm just gonna read that we had our board workshop on six, nine. And then right now, I'm gonna call for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. So, first and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried, um, we will get Darren's thoughts later. And then just to follow up, a regular board meeting is going. A regular board meeting is going to be July thirteenth, we'll move into a closed session after that.
No July sixth?
Uh, correct, no July sixth, and there is no uh closed session tonight. Unless there's something you want to do to address, no? Perfect, so then at this time, I am just looking for a motion to adjourn.
So.
Got a first, second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, motion carried, have a good night, everyone.